Let me get my paperwork. Just got out of a different meeting.
Of a what meeting?
I got out of a Tree Core meeting just about five minutes ago.
Who are we missing?
Uh, we are missing. And I think we have a full corner Jerry, we're good to go.
Alright, so let's call this meeting to order. This is the Maynard zoning board of appeals. It's 7:00 PM, actually 7:01 PM on April 25th, 2022. And the first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from March 28th. And do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of March 28th, 2022.
Do we have a second?
I second Jerry here.
Good, now as I read through the minutes, I found a typo. Because I started the meeting, then I passed it off the page.
Oh, okay, I'll make that change. Where did you do that on the minutes?
Yeah, right in the first part of the minutes there.
Okay, I will add that so we can make that as amended.
Any other edits or changes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Peter, are you there?
Yep, I'm here.
Good, in favor?
Yes.
Alright, so I'm in five favor as well, so that's sort of like five to zero.
Excellent.
Alright. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. I'll read the notice to hear all persons interested in a special permit application filed by Donna Dotson and Andy Marlin, 125, excuse me, 123 Summer Street, Maynard. The subject property at 123 Summer Street is located in S1 zoning district, consistent with section 325 of the zoning bylaws, the petitioner is requesting a special permit, allowing a trade shop use artist studio within the subject property. So the petitioner, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. Attorney Doug Duchesne from Finneran and Nicholson, here this evening speaking on behalf of Ms. Dodson and Mr. Marlin. Good evening, how are you?
Very good, thank you.
Um, Mike, thank you very much. My clients have requested a continuance of this hearing. Um, I've just been recently been brought into this process. Uh, my clients have been doing a great job of trying to apply on their own and and move forward. Uh, they did receive a cease and desist order from the building inspector. They have acquiesced to that and they are not undertaking any activities. And um, and they have filed for the special permit as required. However, as I said, Mr. Chairman, I'm just getting up to speed on this. And additionally, I have recommended to my clients that they have a complete survey and plot plan done of their property so that when we appear before the board, um, we'll be able to present you a great picture of the property and the location of buildings and activities so that we can discuss your concerns or considerations with respect to the special permit. I really believe that a plan like that is necessary for something like this. So we have actually undertaken that. I know the surveyors have been out and they did their work and we are expecting a plan uh, to be delivered to us shortly. Uh, also this continuance would give me some additional time just to get up to speed and make sure that we presented everything or provided everything to the board that we could. So again, Sarah, I would ask for your consideration and please allowing uh, the continuance that my clients have requested.
Thank you for the request. Do we have any comments from the board members?
No.
Again, the silence is deafening. Can I get a motion to allow the continuance?
I make a motion to allow a continuance of this case until the June meeting.
That's two months from now.
Uh, that's what they were requesting, correct?
Yes.
Yes. We have the specific date for that?
Twenty seventh.
Uh, okay, make a motion to allow a continuance of this case until the June 27th meeting.
Alright, and Peter, you seconded, right?
Yep, I seconded.
Uh, any further comments? I'm not hearing very much, so all in favor?
Aye.
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 Do you want to do a roll call, Mr. Chair, on the votes?
Uh, well, I heard myself, Leslie, Jerry, Peter, and John, and that's sort of like everybody.
That was it.
That quadrophenia, no, that's that's more than quadrophenia.
Alright.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. We will see you in a few weeks and we will be well prepared. Thank you very much.
Sure thing.
Thanks Doug.
Alright, the next, the next item on our agenda is another public hearing. Yes, ma'am.
Sorry to interrupt, but before we keep going, um, we, so I just, we're having a little technical difficulties. Um, I'm wondering if there is a cap because you made me host and I'm on like the, my free account. If there's a cap on participants. Bill, do you know that?
I don't know that.
Okay, because someone keeps trying to join, um, and I'm letting them in, but they're not showing up. And so it keeps going back down to 30. I'm wondering if the cap is at 30 for, even though we're on the account, we switched you to my account.
Oh, I see, um, I don't know, but we'll be, I imagine we'll have some people checking, jumping off.
If I could admit, if I could make you host and then I can log into the OMS account and log back in.
Sure.
And then I can take over again.
Well, listen, you want me to go, I'm on the conservation account, correct?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, you should make me the host, I'm ready to go.
Okay, and now just let the few people in who have been trying.
Okay.
Yeah, Bill, I was gonna volunteer to get off the meeting, allow my space to free up and I can go watch TV.
No, I was going to, Jerry.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry to interrupt everyone, but I just wanted to make sure that people were trying to join, that there's, um,
Thanks.
There's this issue, so, okay, I will, I will be, come back in, thank you.
Thanks, Julie, oops. Okay, pardon me, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, so as we deal with this technical difficulty, uh, we'll get it resolved one way or the other. But on the other hand, we have a whole bunch of people here that I would like to find out what their relationship is for this, if they're just general public, a butters, or what. And so, um, Bill, I'd like to get a roll call, if you can manage that, once we figure out who's on.
Oh, okay, well, and we're good to go technologically, but in the meantime, a roll call of attendees?
Yes.
Well, let's see, okay, we have, um, I'm gonna go from on my screen. Uh, Brad Felton, who is the applicant in the upcoming petition. I don't see a picture, but I see his name. And uh, he is the applicant. Um, let's see, Michael Hart, who I believe is, uh, adjacent, yeah, butter to 123 Summer Street.
What, um, what number is he?
One one nine, sir.
One one nine?
Yes, sir.
Um, I don't know who Samsung, SMG781B is. Um, can you identify yourself? Was this Mr. or Ms. Samsung?
I'm guessing it's me.
Oh.
Did y'all call back? And I am a made a residence on, um, Hayes Street.
Thank you, okay, and Lincoln Durham?
Uh, Lincoln and Alyssa were 127 Summer Street and got the info in the mail.
Okay, Amy Shu is on Summer Street, I believe.
Yes, 115 Amy and Bill Shu.
Thank you, Brenda Love?
Yes, I'm at 79 Acton Street, I'm in the butter.
Okay, Linda Thayer?
Resident at 14 Chandler Street and just interested in both hearings.
Ah, Yvette?
I'm also in the butter at 119 Summer Street.
119 Summer Street, okay, and I have Keith Desi. I'm not sure if I pronounced it correctly.
Yes, hi, I'm Keith DC, I'm here with my wife Courtney, we're at 71A Acton Street.
Seven, thank you. Bill Crenshaw?
Yeah, resident, Mockingbird Lane, and not in a butter.
Okay.
Was that Keith that said he was 71A?
Yes, that's correct, uh, Keith DC, 71A Acton Street, in a butter, the 65 Acton Street.
Yeah, I know where that is, thanks.
Thank you.
Um, Mova? MUVA? Okay, we'll come back to that. Uh, maybe I don't have, um, let's see, Sally, Sally Boobie.
Hi, resident 33 Butler Ave, I'm interested in both hearings, thank you.
Come here.
Okay, Michael Lee?
Can you help me turn the video on on this? Do you know how to do it?
Let's see, I'm gonna mute everybody.
Hold on, hold on.
Uh, uh, so you. Let's see, okay, Angela? Voiceford? Angela, you're muted.
It's Angeline, that's her name.
Angeline, oh, sorry.
Hi, it's Angeline, I'm in a butter at 125 Summer Street.
Thank you, uh, Michael Lee, okay, Michael Lee, I'm sorry, we didn't get you before.
Hi, I'm Michael Lee from 73B Main, uh, Acton Street.
Okay, Joseph, oh, Buzari, Buzer? Sorry about your name.
Not a problem at all, um, resident of Maynard, not a butter.
Okay, and I see the building commissioner, Rick Asman has joined us. Um, okay, still going, let's see, uh, Paul Grimes.
Ah, there it is, okay.
Resident at 133 Summer Street.
133 Summer, okay, thank you. Uh, Alan, you're muted. Alan, can you hear me and unmute, please, and identify yourself and your address? Okay, we'll come back, we have two to come back to, and then we have iPhone. Now, boy, oh, boy, I don't know who that is, um. Can, um, let's see, iPhone, uh, are you showing up with no name? Can you identify yourself, please? Okay. So, we have, we have three that, for whatever reason, we haven't heard from, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, we have, uh, Mova, try it again, MUVA?
Hi, I'm Sarah Ayersman, I live at 57 Acton Street, I'm a non a butter, but I'm diagonal from the business.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
And we'll try again with, um, oh, we had someone, another person's just joined us. Alan, do we have you on there? You're muted, if you could let us know a few years and. Okay, and iPhone again. Nothing, okay, and then the last, I just have somebody new came on, five, uh, 508-393-2439, could you identify yourself, please?
Donald Dodson.
I missed that one.
Donald Dodson, Donna's dad.
Okay, and for Maynard resident for butter?
North Borough.
North Borough.
A concerned parent.
Ah, got it. Okay, so, uh, then we uh, have pretty much everybody, we have one left, Mr. Chair, so if you want to scoot ahead, we can.
And, yeah, Bill, if you want to make me host again to let, allow people in, I'm on that, our town account now, so we shouldn't have any problems moving forward.
Good. There you go.
Alright, so are we beyond our technical difficulties?
Oh, yes.
Excellent. So, as we went through the list of attendees, I hear that several folks are butters or neighbors to the Summer Street application. We have continued that, you're welcome to listen in as we go through our next, uh, hearing, but the Summer Street one is, uh, continued until June 27. So, as we continue our public hearing, uh, our next item on the agenda is to hear all persons interested in a special permit application filed by a geologic excavation LLC, 120 White Pond Road, Stowe, Mass. The subject property at 65 Acton Street, Maynard, is located within the business zoning district, consistent with sections 312, Table A and 32A of the zoning bylaws of Maynard. The petitioner is requesting special permits for the subject property that will, one, allow overnight parking of more than one commercial vehicle not to exceed 25,000 pounds gross weight, and two, allow overnight outdoor parking of one or more commercial vehicles in excess of 25,000 pounds gross weight. So the petitioner, please.
Yes, uh, we've been there for about a year and a half, maybe a little bit longer, and we just want to continue as we are, we can screen off the side of the street if people don't like the looks of trucks being parked there. Um, looking for options, uh, to make people happy, this is all news to me. Um, really, uh, we've been, I mean, it's not like there's been ongoing complaints where neighbor and police and people have all come down, stomping their feet, uh, this is just kind of went right to you guys, so I'm willing to do whatever we need to do to accommodate us and to all live happy together. I will put up any kind of screening, I will move stuff around, uh, you know, I'm just kind of looking for some, you know, peace between everybody. That's why I'm here.
Can you explain what it is that you are doing and this, this seems to be related to vehicles? How many vehicles do you have on site now? How many do you want on site?
Yep, we have three trucks that are in excess of 26,000 pounds, and we have three, three, occasionally four trucks that are under 26,000 pounds, of which, three of those can be parked inside. Uh, the bigger trucks would not fit inside that building, it's a smaller building. The spot itself is not exactly ideal for us, but it works and, and we're happy to be there. Um, however, you know, if this does not go through, then unfortunately, will we have to, I suppose, move? Because this is how we operate, I mean, I do do some repairs for people in town and, um, we do, we do want to continue to stay there if we can, but, um, not sure where we're going from here, and I don't know how to otherwise explain what I'm trying to do, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to run a business, you know? And we, we're hardly there, to be quite honest, and if anybody that's around the neighborhood could can come chime in on this, I'd be, we, we literally are there seven in the morning to maybe pick up a vehicle, and then at the end of the day, we park it and we don't have continuous activity throughout the day unless we have to repair something. Then, yes, we are there throughout the day of repairing that, that's what that shop's for, for us to repair our stuff. But it's not like an ongoing racket in and out, it's not like deliveries are coming in and going, it's just simply a a place for us to live with our stuff.
Mr. Chair, perhaps, if I may offer, um, we did put together, um, a small, short PowerPoint with just some photos, if, if you think it would help and move it along, and I think what Mr. Felton's asking for is, you know, where to start, and this might be a good, uh, way, if you'd like, we could queue that up.
What do you think, Mr. Felton, did that work?
Uh, well, I mean, you know, photos can, can be manipulated or whatnot, I mean, I, I, in the wintertime, our stuff has been parked there and it, it may seem unsightly because people don't like excavators and things like that, unless, of course, the excavator's being used to do something. Now, when it's just parked there stagnant, becomes an eyesore for people. That's why I was suggesting that they could possibly put some screening up, like there's fencing that's not exactly permanent, but some sort of temporary fencing that it can stay there uh, while we stay there, just to sort of kind of block us from the vision of our surroundings. Michael's property, the one next to it, further up the road, Brenda's, I don't think, I think she's in residential, but my neighboring properties are business commercial. Unfortunately, over the years, they've built townhomes there, I think Michael lives in one of the condos right next door. The property's been used, as I use it in years past, with oil trucks being parked there, tow trucks being parked there for another business. Uh, Jack's towing, before that Dun Oil that owns the property, parked all their oil trucks there. Um, I'm just trying to pretty much use the property as it's been used over the years and continue what I gotta do.
So, if I could summarize, you're using the property for storage and repair?
Correct, sir.
And a special permit, uh, is required for, uh, vehicles in, um, excess of, um, 26,000 pounds as well as under, so there's two separate requests. The request is not for the business, businesses, it's in a business district, it's for the vehicles.
Yeah, and to correct your numbers, the, the table is talking 25,000 pounds.
Wait, hi, sorry, right, yep, 25, need new glasses.
Mr. Chairman, this is Rick Asman, the building commissioner, if I could just add to this conversation a little bit upfront.
Please do.
Um, it's true that this is in the business district, but the business district also accommodates residential by right as it does, a limited number of businesses that are not, uh, allowed necessarily in the central business or industrial. Um, the, I've only worked for the town 17 years now, but I've never seen this level of intensity of use on this property. I first became acquainted with this property the first month I was working here, uh, because the townhouses were being completed next door. Uh, so I've seen a, a series of auto repair shops and the like with, uh, maybe a half a dozen vehicles, auto vehicles kept out on the property overnight. Uh, but fairly recently, um, I think it was in the, uh, a fairly large redo of your zoning that you did with Mr. Bobrowski about 10 years ago. You added this vehicle section relative to out overnight storage of vehicles. So this is something that really hasn't even been in existence for, uh, what I would consider a long period of time, considering the use of this property. To this property, um, the, 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 the the, the last time I visited the property was, um, about the time that payment was missed on, uh, advertising the initial hearing for this. And at that time, there were at least 10 vehicles that, uh, were, uh, would have qualified relative to needing a special permit on site. And the complaints that I received from neighbors, um, were not about noise so much as the density of vehicles on the site and the fact that tractor trailers and some, or, or large vehicles were being parked on the property line with zero feet clearance to the street, and it was creating problems for going in and out. So if the applicant is suggesting there, that he's only going to have, I, I believe he said, three vehicles, it would be over 25,000 G V W, um, that would include backhoes and any other equipment that is of that weight, um, then that's a, a dramatic reduction and perhaps, uh, uh, the equipment could be kept in from the edges. Because, uh, it's not only the parking of the vehicles tight to the property line, the front property line, but it's also getting those vehicles in and out that is creating congestion on Acton Street. Um, it is zoned business, but it's also right next to residential. And I think that, uh, the board just needs to look at this, even though it is a, a use allowed by right, it's a trade shop. It's the increased intensity of the use and it's the proximity to other zoning districts that the board needs to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, very, very good summary, thank you very much. So, board members, do you have any interest in going through the photo set that Bill is offering?
Yes.
So, Bill, share a screen.
Okay, actually, I will have requests, Julia, there you go, okay. This is just a little summary of everything here, and I think I was just kind of give you some context.
Bill, do you want me to run through it and then you?
Oh, yeah, you just run through it, yeah, yeah, it's, it's just basically pictures.
And who took the photos?
Yeah, well, if you like them, they're mine.
It was, you've got a second career, Bill.
That's the, that was the, yeah, okay, yeah, you got, okay.
Yeah.
There's a movie?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's, it's just the same thing, I just panned it, you know, panned the whole site to kind of give.
Oh, okay, well, that.
I don't know if it works on the PDF, I had some trouble with it.
Yeah, I don't, work, I'm not sure if that's going to, um, happen.
Yeah, no, it, it's not fully or anything, it was just a, it was just a pan shot of.
Of these pictures.
Yeah, it's just, what, it's just all this, yeah.
Okay, well, so if, um, if you guys want me to scroll back, just let me know, um, which ones we can, we can go to.
I'd like to ask the board members if they have any questions.
So, in that photo where there are just two vehicles that were over the 25,000 pound.
Photo two, I think, had it.
Yeah.
Red, white, and blue.
And then there's all this other stuff, yeah.
Wow. Trailer, excavator. And, uh, under 26, is in that, uh, two under 26s are in that photo.
You also have a large flatbed too, don't you?
Uh, that's a trailer.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, that's a trailer, it's not a vehicle.
So, did you say that Dun Oil owns the property?
This is correct.
And so you pay rent to Dun Oil?
I do. I have a five-year lease and, um, I mean, if I could finish, I have three years left of it, if I could finish it out, I, I don't have intentions on staying here forever. Uh, it works for us now, it's not like, I looked around, it's not like you can just find a place pretty easily right down the street to move to comes to parking trucks and equipment and things of that nature. I agree with what Rick had to say, that, you know, I have no problems with conforming with moving stuff away 15 feet, say, even from the street, and I can consolidate things in a way and put up fencing to screen off, uh, any hideous looking equipment that's slightly to anybody in the residential district. Any hideous looking equipment that's slightly to anybody in the residential district. I'm willing to. You know, bent. Or what have you, put up a, a screen of some sort of fence to. Make it look better.
So as you move these vehicles off-site. Which direction do you go? Down through town or out twenty-seven? Where do you go?
Once we pull out of here, we just go straight across by couple of farms and down twenty-seven, just like everybody else. It's the easiest flow straight up.
Okay. Any other board members have questions?
So, is this, it seemed like this wasn't your primary location. You have another business location?
Was that question for me? I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
Yes, is this your primary business location? Is your only location for your business or is there?
Yes, that's correct.
This is the only one?
Yep, otherwise, our stuff is, right now, we have stuff in Milford and. I don't know what else we have. So we have, we have stuff on jobs, stuff goes out on the jobs during summertime.
Okay, so the facility itself, the primary uses, you basically have your office there. You do repairs, like you said, and the X, the secondary use is going to be parking the vehicles around the actual business.
Yep.
Okay, and you said that you were willing to move the larger vehicle that's. Touch basically right next to the street, you'd be able to.
Yeah.
Offer for that and screen it and everything.
That, that has been probably ninety percent of the problem. And actually I have intentions on, I'm actually downsizing at the moment. I'm not trying to grow my business. I'm downsizing and I'm. That's one of the vehicles that's next to be sold. Since this all started. I've got rid of a six-wheel dump truck that was in excess of twenty-six thousand pounds. That's gone. I got rid of two Tahoe pickup truck things. Those are gone. Trying. To downsize because honestly, I only have one employee. So it's unnecessary for me to have all this stuff anymore. Just trying to shrink things down, not gonna. As far as the impact of traffic or anything like that is, is, is actually anything going to be going. Less, getting less, instead of more. That's the truth. We don't work late hours, you know, three o'clock. In the afternoon, that's pretty much at three or four o'clock, the latest, we close up and we're done, you know. There may be some times where they're at six-thirty in the morning to grab a truck and leave, but we're not over there pounding sledgehammers and making a racket, you know. That's, that's, we're just a seven, you know, we're eight-hour day business, that's it.
Believe one of the butters in a letter mentioned that there was some activity there even on a Sunday. That, that's a concern to me that. That and the, you know, the pollution from diesel and. You know, it's one thing if it's weekdays and the kids are getting up to go to school anyways, but to have activity. Waking people up on the weekends, that's another matter.
So Jerry, Peter, John, any, any questions?
I, I have some questions.
Sure, Brad, go ahead.
Mister Felton, where do you, you, you say that your business is at one-twenty White Pond Road in Stowe. But you have an office at sixty-five Acton Street, is that what you said?
Yeah, right, sure. Yeah, that's, yeah, that's my office. That's where we operate out of, yeah.
Okay, and are the trucks that are on, that you store on site, are on site, are they, are they registered in Maynard or are they registered in Stowe?
They are registered, that's a good question. I don't know what this says on the address. They're commercially registered and that probably. I don't know what the reflection of the address is on there, to be quite honest with you. I'll have to look.
Well, you, you said that your business is at one-twenty. White Pond Road in Stowe, is that, is that correct?
That's my house, yeah, that's, that's where, that's where I live, yeah.
Okay, so. Because it says that that's your business address.
Okay.
At least that's what you, that's what you presented to the board in your application.
Sure.
So, so do you know if your, if your vehicles are registered at that address or not?
I'd have to look at the registration on them, but the. I, I, I usually just hand this over to my insurance company and then they just take care of it, you know what I mean? I don't. I, I, I actually have to look at the registration to see what the address is on there to answer that question for you, sir.
Okay. What about the other pieces of equipment that you have there that you use for your business? You, you have some trailers there? What, what else do you have?
What else do I own?
Yeah, I mean, what, what else do you park there at, at, at this Acton Street address?
At some point in time, there may be a skid steer, but that can be parked inside. Skid steers is a little thing with a bucket. Too many excavators. I have. I have a backhoe.
How about trailers?
Trailers are not considered vehicles, sir.
I'm just asking what other equipment that you have.
Have three trailers, yes.
You have three trailers. Do you park those on site as well?
Yes, sir.
Is that right? Okay. And, and is it, do you have any other, other things that, like spare parts and things like that, that you store outside that are, that you use with your vehicles?
Oh, yeah, parts, yeah, yeah, we have a container that we're gonna put, we have some parts into and we have. Yeah, we can.
Are, are they in the container now or are they outside?
We have some. I guess you said parts, when you say parts, like a, like amp or something like that, like.
Yeah, I was thinking like maybe like some pairs or, or something, or lucky things.
Oh, yeah.
Snowplows, things like that.
Yeah, there's, those are the things that are, that do go on the vehicles there. Attachments, attachments.
Okay, so how, how many, how many of those do you have? Just a rough guess.
Oh, rough guess, one, two, three, four, five, probably like, probably have about five or six plows anyways.
Okay, you store all those on site as well?
Yeah, this is about the vehicles, is it not? I mean, we're, we're going through a whole.
I, I'm just, I'm just asking some questions because those are related to.
I don't mind. I don't see how it's relevant to what we're talking about.
Well, I'm, I'm just, I'm just. I'm looking at it. Where, where do you do the maintenance on the, the large trucks?
Right there at that shop, sir.
Okay, but you said that they don't fit inside the garage.
Yeah, that's why the, that's why I'm saying it's like the property is not exactly ideal for us. But we can manage there, yes, we can manage that, we can do our repairs, that we can cut, we can weld, whatever it is we have to do.
So you're doing those, so you're doing the repairs to the large trucks outside? So if you have to do, pull off wheels and do brakes and change fluids and things like that, that you do that outside?
Yeah, because they don't fit inside, we'd have, yeah, if we were gonna do some brake job or something like that, yeah, we'd do it outside, sure.
Okay. And do, when the trucks leave and they store overnight, are they, are they empty pretty much? Or do you sometimes have them filled with gravel or. Agregator or whatever it is that you haul in the large trucks?
Yeah, I, I suppose that if there's some dirt left over on the truck, it might be in there, sir, yeah.
Well, I'm just wondering about the, the, the weight limit that trucks might have where you're driving. Heavy trucks on the residential roads in Maynard. That may, may, you know, puts a lot of extra wear and tear on the roads. Having those large trucks. So that's why I was asking that question.
Okay, sure.
And you're saying that, yes, that they, that you may, you may have that, may have full trucks or partly, partly full trucks.
The roads are, the roads are rated to, to, to kind of weight that the trucks have on them.
Well, not, not, not all, not all roads in Maynard are. In fact, the summer street, for instance, you couldn't have one of those vehicles. Because there's a weight limit. And there's, there are roads in town that have weight limits. Are you aware of roads in towns have what weight limits?
Yes, I'm aware of that.
Can you tell me what, what the weight limits are in, on the road that, on Acton Street? Is there any restriction on that road?
Not that I know of, sir.
Okay, so you. So you're not sure, so you're not sure. You said you, you, you understand what the weight limits are on all the roads, but you're not sure about that.
The Acton Street is for, there's, there's no truck restriction. That's what you're asking.
Okay, that's what, that's what I was asking. Thank you. That's, that's all the questions I have. Thank you, thank you very much, Mister Felton.
Thank you.
So, just, just one point of clarification here on this concept of a trailer. Those large commercial trailers are concluded in the vehicle weight issue. Even though they might not be self-propelled, they are part of the large vehicle thing that we're dealing with. The twenty-five thousand pound issue is the gross vehicle weight. Which is the combined weight of the, the towing machine and all passenger and cargo pieces together. So that would include those large trailers that you have on that property as well as what we're discussing. So I'd like to hear from anybody that wants to speak in favor of this request for the special permit. Is there anybody that wants to speak in favor?
I, can I just ask Brad one question? Well, maybe two questions.
Sure, and then, then we'll get to Ryan. He had something.
Brad, do you do any plowing for this town?
Oh, yeah.
As you said, you have plows, I was just curious.
We do plow for the town of Maynard. That's correct, yeah, thank you.
Do you rent out any of your equipment or do you only do hired-out type work?
We are hired up by the town to plow for them.
No, no, I mean for excav, using any of the mini excavators. Do you rent anything or is it all, you know, you just get hired to do that for work?
Yeah, we do get hired to, we don't typically rent out stuff.
Okay.
So Ri- Ryan, you were going to speak?
Yes, I got this meeting and I thought it was about the parking of vehicles twenty-six thousand pounds or larger. Or under that, this permit. I didn't know it was an environmental meeting. The environmental impact has nothing to do with what this permit is about. And there, his trucks aren't the only trucks that drive up and down that road daily. I know behind the state police crime lab, there's a few tri轴s that park there and they drive up and down that road daily. Also, that road in the town of Maynard has no signs posting weight limit restrictions on it. Most weight limit restricted roads are posted at each end, so anybody driving up and down them would see that and know that.
Excuse me, can I say something?
Sure.
Yeah.
It says, I'm looking at Mass General Law, Chapter sixty A, it says. It's important to note that every motor vehicle, whether registered or not, is subject to taxation. I'm talking about excise tax. Either as excise or personal property for the privilege of road use, whether actual or future, the excise is levied. By the city or town where the vehicle is principally garaged and the revenues become part of the local community treasury. So we, if, if these vehicles are not registered in Maynard, Maynard is not getting the benefit. Of the excise tax on these vehicles, which I would imagine would be significant.
Well, the other point that you're missing is these trucks register in the state. He has a federal tax that he pays at twenty-two ninety. He's got taxes he pays to the state every year that go to the roads in every town. Anything that you guys get. From the state granted to fix roads in this town comes from the guys with the big trucks that pay all these huge fees to run them yearly. I just, I mean, I don't understand what is wrong with this town trying to run businesses out. It's a tax problem. There's other companies. I've lived here my whole life. I mean, the monster dot com deal was a huge. Tax debacle for this town. It's, it's absolutely ridiculous to me that. We're even having this conversation for a building that's been a business for as long as I can remember.
Can I ask Brian where, where your residence is? Are you a butter or just a town member or what?
No, I, I, I live in twenty-one Fairfield Street and I've had. A discussion with Mister Asman once when I had put a deck on the back of my house. And I mean, he said that a temporary tent was a permanent structure. And it was too close to the property line. I think that some of these people. In this meeting need to go to school and relearn some of the stuff that they're saying in this town.
Mister Chair, may I, may I say something?
Sure, we have Peter waiting in the wings here to ask something too, but go ahead, Bill.
Just wanted to be clear to, uh, address one of the last points, the, one of the. Speakers made. This is a special permit hearing. It's governed by Mass General Law and there's a specific. Criteria that has to be met, that the board has to find or has to consider prior to issuing. A special permit. There's an environmental component, just as there are. A, a number of other issues they have to look at. So just for the, so the audience understands. The, that's why, one of the reasons why the questions are wide-ranging. The board is trying to establish. Whether or not there's a consistency with Mass General Law and the. Components they have to look at as dictated by statute. So it's not just something they're coming up with. Thank you.
Yeah, Peter.
Brad, I have a question for you if you don't mind. Would you be willing, if your vehicles aren't already registered with Maynard, looking into transferring them from wherever they're registered to being. Garage in Maynard? If we do, great, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's not a problem at all.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak in favor of this petition?
I have, I would like to speak.
Sure, go ahead, Mova.
Hi, so I do live diagonally across from. This place of business and I will say that. I am up very early, five AM every morning. These guys are gone. They are on Concord Street and they are at that terrible intersection. And they are gone. And I do not come home. I come home at twelve, they are not there. I come home at, let's say, five o'clock. They're, but the trucks are parked and that's it for the day. So, I mean, if you, and I live right diagonally also across from Cumberland Farms. So if you're looking for pollution and environmental issues, let's look at Acton Street. I mean, this is silly. The man wants to work, let him work. We have enough businesses gone out of Maynard in general. And if it's for a. If it's for, just because it looks terrible, that's silly. And once the rail trail started up, people had issues with that as well on that street. Those of who were in the newly built condos, they wanted to sell, but they couldn't because the rail trail was there. Nobody wanted to live against the rail trail. So I really, and this place has been in business for like forty years. And I think it's silly to make a mockery of this man who's literally just trying to run a business. And that is, that is, like, it's just, I think I'm so amped up over it because we have so many businesses gone from Maynard. And it makes no sense to me because it's. Like, sorry, it's not how you want it to look. He's offering options. And just let him work. That's all I have to say.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Mister Chair, it's Bill again. We're getting some. Questions and, and some comments in the chat. At one point or however you'd like to do it. We could. You know, read, read through them for you. I don't know, you know, I don't wanna. I don't want to shortchange anybody on there, but perhaps before the end of the meeting, then I'll read anything on the chat.
Sure, that sounds like a good idea. Is there anyone else who wants to speak in? Oh, we have hands up. John.
Well, Mister Felton, I just had a question on, you said your downside. I was wondering what, what number of trucks you're getting, you're planning it down to and what kind of timeline? Looking for that.
Yeah, so the red truck that is parked closest to the straightest, everybody can tell, hasn't moved in quite some time. That truck is gonna be. That truck is gonna be cleaned up a little bit, gone through and be posted for sale. Maybe be, may, it may or may not sell within a few months, but, uh, it also, you know. We're also actually working at the same time, so we need to get the time to get to it, to clean it up, to sell it. So I would say, uh, comfortably within six months, that truck probably won't be there anymore. And, uh, ultimately, the white tractor and. The blue dump truck that's big would be the two trucks that I would be in excess of, uh, in excess of twenty five thousand. And then I hope to just have only two. Trucks under. Twenty five thousand. That's kind of my goal moving forward in the next six months, this season, I should say. Uh, and those trucks, keep in mind, will actually fit inside. So if they don't want to grant me to be able to park a truck outside that's under twenty six thousand, well, I can park it. It's like, there's three bays there. And. And they, they can fit it. That's what I guess.
All right, sir. Thank you. Peter?
Um. Well, my hand is still up from before. I don't know how to get rid of it.
I couldn't figure out how to put it on.
The reactions, I think.
But, um, I, I did see a message from, uh, Keith, who's the one that seventy one A, which is. Like on the other side of the white fence. Um, so if there's, if he's able to speak now, um, I'd like to hear what he has to say about it.
Hi, thank you, Board. Thank you, Brad. Thank you, Rick Asman for, uh, for speaking and everybody who's spoken tonight. Uh, I live at seventy one A Acton Street and I, I did email a, uh. A letter to Mr. Asner, or Nemser, I'm sorry, sir. And, uh. Anyways, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read it to you now, uh, but anyways. We are in opposition to the application submitted by Geological Excavation LLC for a special permit at seventy five Acton Street. The property is zoned as business for exclusive use as an auto body. However, the property continues to be unlawfully used to store heavy equipment such as summary trucks, trailers and excavators. We purchased our abutting property in two thousand and eight with the understanding that seventy five or sixty five Acton Street. Would be used solely as an auto body as done by TNP Automotive, then ATS Auto Service, then Auto Lab and Quins. In two thousand and twenty one, Geologic leased the property from Dunn Oil and we assumed it would be used for the same purpose, auto body repair. During their tenancy, it escalated way beyond the intent of the zoning bylaw by the storing of commercial vehicles over twenty five thousand pounds. And I also attached some pictures of my own taken back in December of two thousand and twenty one. On eleven twenty seven, two thousand and twenty one, the Maynard Police Department was contacted to report that I nearly avoided an accident. When pulling out of my driveway due to the blocked line of vision created by the red eighteen wheeler stored at seventy five Action Street. At this point, the Maynard Police Department asked Brad Felton of Geologic to move the trailer. Brad refused. My fence cannot be placed within three feet of the town road, but is eighteen wheeler can be stored there? Geologic is asking for something, something way in excess of the zoning bylaw in the district that predominantly is residential. Additionally, they are creating hazards with access to my driveway and my neighbor's driveway. We are opposed to the granting of a special permit by Geologic at sixty five Acton Street for the unlimited use. Of commercial vehicles above and below twenty five thousand pounds. This is far beyond the intent of the current zoning bylaws. As an outdoor, uh, auto body repair. We in Geologic are located in a predominantly residential neighborhood. We appreciate your help in reviewing our concern. Thank you for our consideration. That's all I have to say, but I, I do, do have to say that, that the red trailer that, that's seems to be the issue of concern. Does have concrete slabs in it. So, and that hasn't moved since at least November. So that truck is just stationary and, and that's what's causing the line of sight issue on Acton Street.
Thank you, Keith.
Thank you.
So I see Brenda Love's hand raised here. Is, is that a real hand raise? You want to talk about it?
Yes, I live at seventy nine Acton Street. Um, I, I just want you to know I am in support of, um, the business and I hope they are successful, but. I'm concerned that the property is being used as an equipment storage area and it's not an appropriate use of the property. Also, the trucks and equipment are parked immediately adjacent as the gentleman before me, um, said. Um, and you, I walked down the rail trail. I can't, if I'm on. You know, I live at seventy nine when I walk down. I can't even get between. I'm pretty slim. Can't get between the telephone pole and the red truck. And then when you come around to the beautiful rail trail, um, there's this rusted storage container. I believe it's as large as the building itself. I did, um, send an email. This morning and attached several photos of that, um, and I love the rail trail. I'm so thankful that it's in my backyard. Um, they, um, does the equipment, if this property is used as storage. Is there a permit that's required to store equipment? And also, um, the vehicles are turned on, they, they're, the vehicles are started on. Sunday, yes, they were turned on yesterday. I was outside in my yard, um, and they, I don't know if you have to run diesel trucks for a certain period of time. To get them so that you can still use them. There are also, um, pre emission. Standards for those trucks. So there are, there's a little girl that lives two houses away from the red truck. There is a very elderly couple that lives across the street. They come in and out of their driveway. It's a safety hazard between the, the cat cottage and the telephone pole. And you add the red truck and all the vehicles coming in and out. Um, it's just an accident waiting to happen. And I definitely want you to succeed in your business, but I just feel that. The overextension, every inch of that property is covered in some sort of a trailer. There's also a boat in there. Um, so it just, it needs to be addressed. It's, I love where I live. I love our town. And it used to be a small automotive business with, um, several cars parked there, but, um. Now it's just, um, it's like a dump. Sorry. Thank you for your time.
Well said. I suppose she could access the rail trail from her backyard, but she has to walk down the side of the street that doesn't have a sidewalk, apparently. I get it. This is kind of a bashing and it's unfortunate. Um, just simply just trying to survive. Over here and, um, I'm willing to come, willing to conform to whatever needs you guys want. And, uh, I have some plans to. Downsize. And I hope I could stay for at least a little while, at least, at least for my lease.
I, I appreciate the position you're in. It's not an easy one. But as, as we go through our process here, we look for people that are speaking in, in favor and people that are speaking in opposition. And so I'd like to find out if there is anyone else that has an issue, wants to speak in opposition to his petition. I'm not seeing.
I tell you one more thing.
Ryan?
Yes, um, so as Brad said, that he has a five year lease with Dunn for that property. If you guys shut him down and don't requ- uh, give him this permit, is the town gonna be responsible for. Buying that lease out?
No.
That's beyond my pay grade. That's beyond my pay grade to answer.
Well, I, I, I think if the butters shut the business down, he signed a lease for that property. Without the knowledge of these qualifications for that property. That if the town's gonna shut his business down, I feel that the town should have to do something. To make him whole again if they're gonna throw him out of town.
Well, I, I, I appreciate your question. The point is, the zoning bylaws have been in effect longer than he has had this lease. And in the zoning bylaws, it requires a special permit for him to park any vehicles outside over twenty five thousand pounds. And any one vehicle, commercial, less than twenty five thousand pounds. And so, Ryan, if he had read his documents, the town bylaws before he did this, he wouldn't be here.
Well, but why is this the first business in that location? Because when it was Jack's Auto Repair, he had ten trucks that were. Right around twenty six thousand pounds or more and there was nothing, if you said these bylaws were in town forever. Then why is he the first business that's getting singled out on this?
I, I think you can get the answer to that one just by walking down Acton Street and looking at it. It's significantly different than it was before he was there. And that's what, uh, Mr. Asman was saying when he was reviewing the, the conditions here. So.
Well, I walk down, actually, I go by Acton Street all the time and it's been the same.
You know, I disagree with you. So anybody else have any questions or comments, pro or con to this petition?
Hi, this is Courtney DC. I'd just like to read my comment aloud. Is that?
That's fine. Go ahead.
Um, I'm sorry, I haven't met you, Brad, and we live next door. Um, I'm from seventy one A Action Street. I'm not opposed to business and I do feel for how this is. Affects you and, um, sorry, I just, um, I'm not concerned about the noise. I don't think geologic is noisy. I'm just concerned that the space is not being used for what the area is owned for.
Thank you.
Courtney, can, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Um, do you notice any issues with, uh, starting the trucks on weekends or anything like that?
No, it's not an outside of business hour issue for me. Um, no. I appreciate that he's saying, you know. If there's things that can be done, that would. He's open to that. I just, um, wanna do things within the zoning. Bylaws.
All right.
Linda there has her hands up.
Yes, Linda.
Thank you. Um, I, I appreciate everyone's position tonight. I know everyone wants to, it sounds like everyone wants to work towards it. What's fair to all involved. Um, I just was, I'm asking for clarification on whether or not this is a business registered in Maynard. And I, I think you answered the question about the excise, that where, where the tech, uh, I'm sorry, the vehicles are registered. But is it a Maynard business?
Uh, I, I started my business in Waltham, Massachusetts. I live, I currently live in Stone. Um, if it, for fifty dollars, I can go down to the town and. Get a business certificate for town of Maynard. If you, if that makes everybody happy, I have no problem doing that. I'm getting a new business certificate from Maynard. I don't have a problem with re-registering trucks if I need to pay. Taxes, uh, an excise tax to the town of Maynard. That's, doesn't matter if it's gone, it's coming out of my pocket either way. I don't care where it goes. So, um, you know, I'll move stuff over. I'll. I can present a plot plan of sorts with dedicated spots. Uh, for, for particular vehicles. And willing to work with you guys however you like for me to, uh. Just continue to operate like we have, you know, put a cap number on it. Uh, somebody had mentioned, well, this was gonna open up the door to him being able to store, uh, ten to fifteen to twenty trucks there. And, and cruise up and down the street with them, but, uh, that's not the case because I. Want to downsize. I don't want to work more. I don't want to grow this anymore. This is, it's not easy what I do every day. This is tough stuff. And for one person and the stress that I have to deal with just on a daily basis, I'd like to downsize. Thank you. Won't want to expand on my trucking. I don't want to expand on all my vehicles. Tell me I can only have three trucks, big trucks and three small trucks and you'll probably see less than that as time goes on.
All right. Well, thank you very much. I, I see a hand, uh, Mr. Asman, you, you have a question, comment?
Just a comment, um, and Brad started to touch upon this. It's. It's, it's good that the board has a figure to deal with in terms of, uh, a limit to the number of trucks, but. Um, there really hasn't been any sort of site proposal in terms of setbacks for the vehicles or. Um, any specific locations for screening or what that screening might be. Um, and I, I think for, for this as a special permit to be, um, dealt with. That, that tho- those issues have to, uh, be agreed upon as well.
Yeah, you're, you're, you're reading my mental agenda here. It's items I wanted to get to. One, once we hear the various comments and, and items. So is there anything else that, uh, we can get from the folks in attendance? Or do we, are we ready to go deliberate and discuss? I'm hearing nothing. Leslie?
Uh, what? Deliberate?
We, we'd wanna.
To make a, do we need to close the public hearing? And make a motion that we close the public hearing?
But before you do that, did you have things on chat that you wanted to?
Oh, that's.
Oh, yeah, good.
Yes, please. I see a, a number eleven down there. I, I don't know what that means.
Uh, uh, well, let's see here. I, I, we just haven't, I haven't had a chance to go through all these. Um, but, uh, they're gonna be part of, of the record if they, but. One thing I, that Julia did, uh, point out is make sure if you do put in the chat, we have, um, your name and address. Cause otherwise it's, it's, we can't attribute it. Um, shall I just read through the, the, um, the text, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Okay, it says, th- there's, um, from Ryan, that there's no post a weight limit on us, that road. He isn't the only one driving that road every day. Mova wanted to speak. She did. Okay, let's see. This is just like speaking opposition. Uh, this property was Dunn Oil and Jack's Auto Repair. My brother was Jack and there were many parks.
Uh, if you want.
Uh, many trucks parked on that property and it was a twenty four hour company. Um, Joseph Buzar, uh, if there's a business. Zone with an occupant, uh, amen- amen- amenable to making changes to improve the aesthetics of the property as well as registering the vehicles in Maynard. I would hope the board would be willing to work with the applicant. Um. Uh, let's see, uh, telephone, uh, Ryan, the telephone pole. Is in the property that's in question. It's not a hazard. The truck is thirty yards away from the intersection or more. Uh. See, uh, I think Courtney, uh, we just heard from Courtney Desi as, um, seventy one A Acton Street. I'm not opposed to business. I'm not concerned about noise. Geologic is not noisy. I'm concerned that the space is not being used what the area is owned for. Um, and Julia's reminding everybody, if you have a public comment, please state your name and address. Okay, um, Daniel Call, Callback, twenty six Hayes Street is, uh, under Sam Stone. SMG seventy one B. I am supportive of this business and the location. My brother was Jack of Jack's Auto. This all seems to be about the dollar signs. There's nothing to do with the cosmetics of the property. He's agreed to make changes. No, don't close the hearing. Um, Ryan says it's a public meeting. It should be decided with a public review. Uh, just if I can clarify. It may, it doesn't mean close it to the public. It means for public comment, the, that, uh, when they close the public hearing portion. Uh, Sally, uh, Bibi, I said, I'm at thirty three Butler. I am a supporter of this business. He's willing to work with the town. Please, let's not make it difficult for another small business to succeed in this town. And that is what I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So what Leslie was trying to say was we're gonna close the public. Input portion of the meeting so that we can deliberate. And we might have to ask Brad a question or two. But we're finished with obtaining information from the various abutters to this property. So Leslie has put a motion out there. Do we have a second? Okay, all in favor of closing the public comment period of this, period, portion of this meeting?
Aye.
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 Thank you. So. Board members, any suggestions, comments?
Well, um, I certainly think there should be a limit to how many trucks over twenty five thousand. Pounds are allowed to be parked there. Um, and that. Um, as much as possible, things should be parked inside. Um, and that they should, whatever he's parking. Um, and that they should, whatever he's parking there should be parked far enough back from. The street that it's not creating, um, a visual obstruction to the traffic. And I would want to have, well. I don't know if we can tell him that he, that he has to, uh. Register those vehicles in Maynard, but that seems reasonable that.
I, I don't believe that the, the board could direct that, but the applicant has volunteered and I think if they wanted to make that. Part of the approval and the applicant was agreeable, there's no problem with that.
I think, um, uh, the biggest source of contention of the entire property is that red dump truck that. He's gonna be getting rid of soon anyway. Um, and he already expressed that he'd be willing to move it. Uh, because that is the one that is blocking, uh, the driveway of seventy-one A. Uh, creating a blind spot. So when they back up, they can't really see. So. Since that seems to be resolved, that he's, I would assume, move it right away and create some sort of a. Offer of some sort. I, I'm not sure the exact footage from the street, uh, that would leave that area open, which. Would, um, prevent a blind spot from seventy-one B and A, uh, when they get out of their driveway. I think a tall screening type fence, something temporary to block the. Uh, larger trucks that are parked maybe in the front, something like that, maybe in the back where the, um. Where that giant, uh, big storage container is, some sort of, you know, nothing fancy, like a tall fence that just blocks the view. I think that might satisfy, uh, some of the complaints about that. Uh, and if, I think it's within reason, uh, to do. Uh, I don't think it, it's appropriate to have any type of. Restrictions that he can't park the vehicles that are under twenty-six, uh, twenty-five thousand pounds that he would have to park them inside. Um, it, it is an auto body, uh, property. I, I don't think that. It's necessary to have him park. Vehicles that are, I mean, a mock and it's, it was an F three fifty. I don't think that's, uh, inappropriate to have in a property that's an old auto body shop. Um, that's my opinion.
So just to refresh you on the chart in the zoning bylaws. To have overnight parking outside of a commercial vehicle under twenty-five thousand pounds. In the business district requires a special permit from us.
Over, oh, I'm sorry.
And if you have more than one, one or more commercial vehicles greater than twenty-five thousand pounds, you also need a special. Permit from us.
That's right.
And so this is a business district and it's not an industrial district where it's allowed by right. Or the healthcare industrial district where it's allowed by right. And so we have to find that it is, uh, appropriate. That he can store outdoors. Uh, more than one commercial vehicle grade, not at, less than twenty-five. Or anything over twenty-five.
Right. Just to be clear, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, the, the overnight, the, the applicant or anybody is, um, one. Commercial vehicle under twenty-five thousand, um, is permitted by right. It's when you get more than one.
Yeah, I got tongue tied on that. Sorry.
That's right. Okay, but, but otherwise you're right on. That was.
So are those trailers that, are they or are they not? Can, uh, do they fall under that?
Yes, they are. Because it's the gross vehicle weight.
Well, not the trailers that are disconnected. The trailers. Yeah, exactly. But we've already talked about those. It, it doesn't count the trailers that are. Like for moving the excavation equipment, that doesn't count, but the excavator itself would count. Am I right with that?
Man, just, just as it's in the, the packet that you guys got an email, gross vehicle weight is the gross vehicle weight or combined weight of vehicle. And passengers and cargo pieces in total. So if you cut it apart and you have a twenty-four thousand pound trailer and a, and a ten thousand pound tractor. That's, that's okay until you connect them together.
Well, I, I think the, the trailer, the large one that's next to the, uh, looks like F three fifty. I think that's removing excavation equipment, which. So that would, the excavator in the trailer would be one permit. The trailer wouldn't be separate from the excavator because they, they go together.
Right.
That's how I would look at it.
So. And so the question is, are you leaning towards granting him? Either of the items in the special permit request? And if so, are there limitations on either one?
I think he was, didn't he ask for a three and three? Was that those permits, three for over and three for under? Or am I remembering that wrong?
No, um, I, i- if it, uh, I would ask, um. Actually, I'd ask the applicant to clarify that. I had a couple of different numbers written down here. What, uh? You know, what were you asking for in vehicles over twenty, um, five thousand pounds, Mr. Felton?
Yeah, at the moment, three and three, and my intentions are to eventually, I'm not looking to grow this. Any larger than it is. I'm actually looking to downsize and consolidate some things. So that's my intentions with moving forward with my business.
So it would be three, you're requesting three in excess of twenty-five thousand and, uh. Two, yeah, and three under. Okay.
You got it.
And the three hundred could be parked in the garage, like the three hundred.
I mean, we don't typically wanna park them in the garage, just, but, but we could.
Yeah.
Yeah, yep, correct, sir.
Does it, do those larger trucks, not the large ones, the, um, the ones that are under? I think the, with the dual wheels in the back, do those have a beeping sound effect when you back up?
Uh, no, they don't have, uh, backup alarms on them currently. Because we do snow plowing and stuff, so they've technically, they're supposed to. That's part of your, uh. Inspection, but, uh, they're currently disabled from the winter.
And that's fine. I, I was only asking because I was gonna say, if they have backup alarms. Then, and we're saying you have to park them inside, then when you back them up inside or back out. Instead of not making noise, if they're parked outside, they would start to make noise and then we bother the neighbors, which is what we're trying to.
One of the trucks has an interrupter that can turn it on and off. It switched, it is switched. So if the, if the backup line i- is an issue for anyone, they can easily be put on a switch to be turned off.
Brad, any comments?
Do I have any comments?
Oh, excuse me, the other Brad, Brad Schultz, sorry.
Um, I guess the only concern that I might have, um, and I'd like to see if anybody else has this concern is that if you're working on. The large trucks outside, um, that's sort of, uh, there's a lot of environmentally. Toxic materials, uh, that are on trucks. And that if they were be, to be worked on indoors where they could be contained properly. Um, it seems that that would be the way to go as opposed to working outdoors, especially right next to. Houses, uh, residential houses. So the potential of having an environmental impact. With having, um, you know, fast or fluids and things like that, that, you know, might get airborne. Um, seems like it, you know, be a concern. I'm just wondering if there's anybody else on the board that, um, might have that concern as well.
Uh, I'm not too worried about that. I mean, it's an old auto body repair shop. If there was any place.
But those.
From a business standpoint in town.
Those were indoors. They work indoors. They could contain it with, with dust containment and things like that, which is what auto body shops have. And this doesn't have any kind of dust containment because it was outside. And that was, that, that was my like concern that I had.
Sure, I can appreciate that. Anytime we work on something, we take precautions on any kind of spillage. I don't know if I muted, but.
No, we heard you. Thank you. Jerry, John, any comments?
I'm good if we, I think we just put the, the three and three limit on as requested.
Any conditions on that?
Three hundred and three over, no more than three hundred and no more than three over.
And, and nothing else? No, what? No conditions?
As far as the vehicles, that's it. That's all I'm, I've got.
Jerry?
Say, I'm, I'm, I'm with John on this. I go with the three over, three under. Um, I also go, I guess happen to be looking at Sally will be as, uh, you know. Noting chat. Uh, you know, my view is we need to support the businesses in town that are here today. Uh, and do whatever we can to help them. And, and Brad seems to want to work, granted they're trucks. You know, it's like putting lipstick on a pig. It's still gonna be a pig. It's gonna be a truck. You can paint it, clean it, whatever you want. It's a truck. Can he move them? Can he put screening up? Can he do some of that? Absolutely. He seems to be wanting to work with us on that. I, I'd move in that direction. I mean, to, I don't wanna say it sort of is what it is. But, you know, it was an auto body shop and it's morphed into something. It wasn't like last week, it was a church. And now there's eighteen wheelers parked there. It wasn't a flourish shop. It was an auto body shop. So granted. The, excuse me, the dynamics have changed, but. They're trucks. So I go with the three, the three, work with Brad on the screening, um. And, and, and do the best we can. That's, that's why three cents worth.
All right, thank you.
Welcome.
So I see a hand up from Mr. Ashman.
Uh, yes, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of comments.
Please.
Um. Concerning any sort of fencing that would be placed to screen it, I, I, I would caution the board to, um. Require any significant fencing along the street side of the property. Uh, because you could create a, a site obstruction and, and unwanted consequence. If it extended very far. Um, our fencing right now, uh, that would be close to a property line would be limited to seven feet in height. And I could see a section of fence if it was so proposed or desired that would. You know, screen a specific parking area on the site, but you don't want fencing to extend to an area where your. Vehicles would be entering, close to where vehicles would be entering onto the street from the site. Um, the other thing that I wanted to mention was, um, this, this is in a paved lot. I mean, I'm pretty sure it's paved corner to corner unless there's a little gravel exposed somewhere. And so. If you're wondering or wanting to consider setbacks, if this were a new development. Which it obviously it isn't, the parking would be restricted to twenty feet off the front line and. Ten feet off any other property line. Um, obviously it's a previously developed light lot and those are pretty stringent requirements, but. It just gives you kind of a measuring stick if you wanna think about setbacks. That's all.
Well, thank you. I, I have a question for you on, on something in my feeble memory from years gone by. And it deals with Christmas Motors. Didn't they have to do a setback and some fencing or camouflaging on their front line? And weren't there other properties in town that had to do the same?
Uh, they were supposed to. Um, it was within the, um. Uh, the licenses that the selectmen grant annually. Uh, to, uh, used body and, and auto body sales places. Uh, it's a selectment's permit. And one year, uh, the conservation agent and I were asked by the select board to go around to. The various businesses and to see if they were complying with the conditions of the selectment's permit. Um, there were several places that were not in compliance. Uh, Beamers right behind this on, uh. And Christmas Motors were a couple of the locations that were not in compliance. After this was reported to the select board, the conservation agent and I were asked not to review. Compliance with the licenses anymore. So that's what you might be recalling.
Thank you.
The one other thing I wanted to mention too was, was the conversation about backhoes and, and the flatbeds that carry them. And I, I would consider the backhoes and leave the flatbeds alone.
Okay, thank you. So for us to. Uh, develop a, a, a special permit. Bill has put together a nice outline with six bullets in it. Traffic flow and safety. Public service and utility adequacy, neighborhood character, natural environment impact and fiscal impact. And the question, oh, and then social and community impact. So as, as we've been talking here, it seems to be the big issues. Are traffic flow and neighborhood character. Am I missing one? Is it those two that are the key issues we have to resolve?
Well.
Mr. Chair, I think that, that, uh, what Rick had said, um, regarding the setbacks would be a, a good place to, to, um. Start from because of proximity to the, uh, both the street and the abutters maybe. Um, something the board wants to consider before they go further on that.
I'm still not clear on how this is a Maynard business if he's, if the business is in Stowe.
He's gonna transfer the business license to Maynard.
Is that gonna be part of our?
I think it's gonna be part of the, the special permit.
I think Mr. Fulton's agreed to that, uh, as I understand, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, as well as registering the vehicles in Maynard. Yeah, okay, so, so we, we could make that, we just put that in the decision.
So what conditions do we have? The one I'm hearing is that that red truck or any large vehicle. Really shouldn't be right up against the road.
Right.
Far above or should we go back from the road?
Well, if Mr. Aspen was saying twenty feet would be, you know, new construction. This is antique construction and so. At least this, half a car length so that somebody backing out of a driveway can see.
I agree to that.
And fifteen feet's a good, good setback.
Yeah, if you can do fifteen, if you can do ten, somewhere's in there so that somebody backing out doesn't get, uh, surprised.
Is, is.
How do we wanna?
I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, how do we do the, uh, what should, should we recommend for the screening in the front? I don't think we should do fencing. Come, I don't know, do we do it the whole length of the property? I don't think that'd be.
He has to get out somehow.
Sorry. Yeah, I think maybe just from like, uh. Where seventy-one, um, Acton Street, I mean, yeah, seventy-one Acton Street. Maybe over a certain amount to cover everything along where the white fences, kind of block that. Cause that seems to be where most of the vehicles are. And then maybe something in the back.
Yeah, go ahead.
Something in the back. Something in the back with the rail trail, yes, because you can look right in from the rail trail.
Yeah.
Um, lots of.
Okay, so are we good with, with the back? Should we make, would a condition be, uh, screening of a seven foot, a seven foot fence? With the rear of the property abutting the rail trail?
Yes.
You know, that, that fence line on the front, you know, he, he's, he must be an artist to be able to get that red truck. he must be an artist to be able to get that red truck in behind the power pole and not hit anything. But still, he needs to have some room to maneuver with that fence.
I agree.
Of, yeah, a fence along, are you talking about a fence along, was it Concord?
Acton Street.
Acton.
I can share the, uh, the pictures again too, if that's helpful.
Yes, I think that might be a good idea, Joel.
Oh, okay.
So good, uh, yeah, right there. So that, the one on the left, the house there, that's seventy-one A. Or B, I don't know which one it is, but that's the seventy-one house. So I'm thinking from like where that property line is. And then, I don't know how far over, I guess over far enough to cover, to block the view of, um.
Yeah, but where would you start? They can't back out and see the street, so how far in with the fence? Start.
Like fifteen feet back.
So he's the only smart one that recognizes, otherwise.
So when they're backing out, correct? You're looking this way for traffic.
I'm sorry, but how much fucking traffic is really there?
There isn't any.
Can we, uh, make sure we meet ourselves in front of speaking, please? Or we don't wanna have to do it? Okay. So, uh, Peter, you were saying about the, 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 um, perimeter.
Well, so if you're looking at the picture now, you got the property line is probably somewhere in between the tree and where the truck is, you know, somewhere in that range. So I would say fifteen feet back from the street. Starting at the property line and then, if you're looking at this picture, we go to the right and block where that truck is right now. But fifteen feet back into the property, like some sort of screening fence of some sort. I think that would be sufficient in blocking most of the view from the street. And it would allow space where, um, the, uh, butters at seventy-one would be able to back out and then see the street. At least that's, that's my take on it.
Um.
Just gotta scroll up so you can see this is the other, um, from the other angle.
Oh. What is that white? Although, what's the?
It's a white privacy fence for that, but, um, seventy-one A. I don't know who the fence belongs to though.
Oh, so, so.
It belongs to the seventy-one.
So there was already some fencing?
Yes.
Oh.
So you can see here, um, in this picture, I don't know if you guys can see my cursor. But it, it ends about here. Um, it's on this, that side.
Oh.
So we just extend to that one?
Yeah. But it would be, um.
On the other side.
Making sure it's on his property.
That looks, it looks like the property where the truck is, is lower than the property where the house is? Is that true?
Yes.
So the, of fence wouldn't be that effective because you're already down like a foot or something, it looks like.
It's mainly for blocking from street level.
Mm-hmm. Well.
Cause they have trees there anyway and they look.
Yeah.
And they never said that the issue was the view from, from their house. It was the, the leaving the driveway that there was a, um, blind spot.
Fences are ugly, yeah.
Like, can you take one out and just kind of hold the baby?
So we're having a, a discussion on the fence and it sounds like we're reasonably in agreement on that. On the front and the back. And.
Would the fence, uh, Mr. Chair, just clarify, the fence would basically match what the existing fence is on the, on the side facing seventy-one Acton, correct?
It, it sounds like that would, you know, privacy fence, you know, you know, plastic fence of some sort.
Okay, okay.
Um, and that would take care of the traffic flow and safety and would also take care of the neighborhood character. And it sounds like we're in a, a agreement that he, that it's the three and three of the vehicles. Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
It, it actually would, we'd be granting for two and three because one is allowed by, right? So we would say.
Two additional.
Two additional under, right?
So just to clarify for everyone, if, if you were driving down the street and we had an, an additional fence, so you can kind of see behind the Subaru where the, their fence currently ends. So you would bring that up to, up to fifteen feet of, of the roadway.
Yeah, then fifteen, yep.
Which is approximately the, the other side of that red truck.
Yes.
Yeah, like right, right around.
Yeah. And it would extend along Acton Street, how far to the power pole?
That.
Trying to get a good angle. This one would be better.
I guess that's about the length of the, of the longest truck that we have, so that might be appropriate. I don't know, I guess.
I wouldn't wanna put one along Acton Street because then you're cutting his parking lot in half.
Yeah.
Well, i- i- if, if if there's a hesitancy with that, and I, and I don't disagree about putting the fence along there, but there's, um, perhaps the, the setback clearly would be
Yeah.
essential to, to, because, I mean, and I'm sure Mr. Fulton understands, he, he could, he could see this and would.
I wouldn't be in favor of putting a fence along Acton Street.
I thought that's what we were doing between, I thought it was gonna go that like, uh, maybe not the length of the truck, but maybe half of the truck just to cause a little bit of screening. Isn't that what we're doing?
I don't know.
Oh, I was talking about, I was talking, I'm sorry, I was talking about the side setback. Ex- the extension of that one.
Yeah.
So you're not gonna do anything on Acton Street at all? I thought that, that was the point, was to block the view from the street too?
Oh, I'm not saying we're not. I just said that, that, I'm just trying to get my notes. Um, no, I, 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 all I'm saying is that on, um, Acton Street, you know, the, the, the proxim, the truck's proximity is to the road is, is a considerable part of this. And so however the board wants to address that.
So, the question here is why do we want the fence on Acton Street? Is it to get, uh, less visual impact? Or is it to keep him from parking that red truck kind of vehicle there?
I, I think it's just to block vision. I don't think he's gonna try and park the truck there after this whole meeting and everything. I mean, if you think about it, none of the neighbors said that he's, he's loud, he doesn't do anything disruptive. I saw one note that, he respects the speed limits in that area. He's, he's there, uh, business hours. Um, so I don't think he's, after all this, he's gonna go and park the truck there. I think it's more just screening the stuff that's there, um, as much as possible, but while leaving as much of the parking lot open as possible to preventing any type of, um.
So.
You know.
If he says he's gonna get rid of the truck in the next few months, now you don't have the, the truck as your visual block. You, you can see the other vehicles. Is, is that acceptable? Because if that's acceptable, I'm questioning why the interest in the fence.
Well, I think the point is to, it'd be, I was thinking that there would be a screening type of fence. If you're looking at this picture on the other side of the truck. So if you're looking at the truck, it would be on the side that you can't see. You know, like fifteen feet into the property that would go a little, like maybe half the length of the truck to cause some sort of screening. Just to kind of block everyone's view of what's parked there.
That, that's right, because the, the, a seven foot fence is not gonna block the truck itself. But if the truck is not there, um, and it's out working that day, um, and it will block the view of the rest of the vehicles and everything that's, that's on the lot.
Was this one of the complaints that we heard? Was, it was just that, that, the, uh, visual, uh, mess?
There was, there was one, yes.
Yeah, yep.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Bill.
Uh, if, I think, is Rick still on the line? Um, if he is, um, I think we should clarify again what he felt was appropriate for a, a, a setback for fence if there was a one to be placed along that, cause that may impact, um, the board's decision as, as well, because it was not, you know, to the perimeter.
No, I'm, I'm still here. Um, the, if, if you go over seven feet with the fence, then you're subject to the same setbacks as a structure. And you just don't wanna be doing that. Um, so in terms of, of screening, I, I, uh, the um, interior lot line fence that's already there, if you extend that further out, um, that's fine, just, um, like you mentioned, make sure that it terminates about fifteen feet. Or at least ten feet before you get to the road or you're, you're creating another permanent, um, uh, visual impact in terms of, uh, uh, blocking people's views. Uh, similarly, um, you know, once you, you do have this yard being used for storage of backhoes and other construction equipment. So it's not totally bad idea to have a, a fence that, that then turns the corner and extends for some distance. Um, to help screen off what that back storage area looks like. Um, again, it wouldn't be any more than seven feet tall. I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't suggest that you extend it any more than say twenty feet or so along that line. But what it does for you is that, that where you put that fence helps define where not only screens during the day part of the yard, but it also defines where the parking area is. Um, so you're not gonna have parking on the outside of that fence and I don't want myself or any subsequent, um, building commissioners to have to go out there with a measuring tape. Find out where the town right of way ends and, and measure in from it on a regular basis. Besides, I can't legally do that anyway. So if we, it's, if you do establish a parking area with a fence, it's somewhat helpful. I just wouldn't overdo it because you don't wanna limit a person's ability for, for entering and exiting that property.
What would you think's appropriate for the, the, the setback for the, uh, fence along Acton, ten feet?
I think ten feet would be a minimum that you would shoot for. That should give anybody a, a chance to see past uh, past the fence and, and see oncoming traffic if they're coming out of those driveways. As well as the traffic that's on Acton Street, seeing people coming out of those driveways.
Yep.
Thanks, Rick.
So, I'm, I'm still dealing with the six bullets, guys. And the only items that we are dealing with that have an impact, if you will, is the traffic flow with the fence and the neighborhood character. Everything else, if, if you agree with me, let's say so, are, are not a concern. They are acceptable. So it's only the traffic flow for the safety issue and the neighborhood character, both of which the fence resolves. Is that right?
I, I agree.
And so then we need to have some motions made that would acknowledge those requirements, conditions. And that he can have two additional under twenty-five vehicles and three over twenty-five vehicles.
So, uh, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, before, before you make that, Leslie, I just wanna, are, are we, did we, is the boarding concurrence that along Acton Road, there would be, uh, the fence would be twenty feet along uh, parallel to Acton Road, seven foot max with a minimum setback of ten feet. Is that correct, Board?
I would like, there was a space underneath that fence in case animals are running across so they don't end up getting squished. Like they run and then there's no place to go for twenty feet.
So I'm wondering the, the twenty foot number, that's along Acton Street, and I'm looking at this picture that is the length of the full truck. And if you only do half the truck, it doesn't do much because you got the power pole in the way. And so what if you just bring the fence sort of like close to where the power pole stops or where, where in, 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 line it out?
I think, um, I, I think I'm leaning that way too. Uh, do, can we ask Brad how long that, that truck is?
Sure, you can ask him.
Brad, do you know the length of that truck?
Uh, yeah, that truck is roughly fifty feet, forty-five, fifty feet.
Oh, really?
Well, it's a, well, that's a twenty-six foot trailer and the tractor is half under it, so I guess it's more like thirty, thirty, thirty-two-ish, thirty, somewhere around there. Don't pull on the tape measure on it, maybe, maybe forty tons.
Yeah, that, that's a good benchmark. So, so I'm not far off in saying that it's longer than twenty feet.
Yeah, so twenty, about twenty-six feet is where the trailer meets the truck.
Uh, yeah, where it's, where it's on, it's half, it's on top of it, but yeah.
Okay.
Do you use the telephone pole as your? Your line?
I don't.
No, no.
I just, I started there to put it kind of out of the way in my eyes, but I put it in the way of other people unpronounced to me. So now, uh, now that I know, I'll move it tomorrow. Uh, I have no problem with that, you know? I've scooted over. There's been no communication to me. There was someone that mentioned that the police had talked to me. I've never had the police talk to me about this issue. This is all through Rick, Rick to me. That was all news to me from there and now I'm here in front of you guys and I'm I, I feel like we're resolved with some things and I'm, I'm, I'm pretty, I'm feeling pretty good and pretty happy about this, so.
Brad, can I ask you a question? If you had a, a fence going from your pro, the property line over the length of where the truck is, so it'd be from the seventy-one Acton Street property line over all the way to where like the nose of the truck is, whether thirty-five, whatever feet.
Yeah.
Does that, does that block too much of the parking area that would obstruct your ability to move vehicles? Or would, do you think something around twenty-five feet would be more appropriate?
Well, then like, uh, like Chairman, I believe Paul is right.
Yeah.
So, like, like he says, so what's, so what's the point of a half a fence or a full fence or no fence? Like, what? What, what is it that, what's the complaint and what needs to be addressed? Uh, if it just, so if it's just for the purpose of me, like Rick said, not kind of encroaching a little further out where I'm supposed to be, uh, then that's the one issue. I mean, I could paint a line there or something. It's just, just a simple offenses. Of, you know, if the fence is not, if, if the fence is simply just gonna be a defining area for me to be on a, either side of, uh, the same thing could be achieved just by, it's a, a, a line painted on the ground, a yellow line for forty feet. Um, so, I mean, I can have some striping put down and that would, I, I'm not sure if the benefit of the fence uh, in, in regards to, uh, if it's just for a boundary for me or if it's a visual screen for people.
I, I think it's more for the visual screening for the, the heavier.
If it's for visual screening, then I would say the more fence, the better for people to not see what's going on there. The grade of that driveway, it's deceiving in the pictures, but the grade falls off significantly towards the building. As you, as you see in the picture, it looks almost as if my truck is as big as the building. Uh, that's because it just dropped straight down. So if we put a fence up there that's seven foot and the trucks are parked further in towards the building, you would never see them. Because it's below that grade. And the point of view from the street, you wouldn't see them because you're looking at the seven foot fence. The trucks are gonna be parked three, four feet below that when they're closer to the building. Uh, so the fence probably would be beneficial in that respect.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, and to answer your question, because I didn't, uh, would it, would a, would a further or shorter fence, uh, impede my in access of leaving or entering, uh, no, they, it wouldn't be a difference either way. I could pull in or out if there was a fence twenty-five feet long on Acton or forty feet long on Acton.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Reason I suggested the, the power pole as a marker point is it's an easy thing to see. It's right there. And, and if you're gonna say you want a thirty-five foot fence or a twenty foot fence or a forty foot fence. I'm just calling it the power pole and say, make it out to about where that is.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay. So.
Okay.
And then I heard that we wanted a fence on the backside because of the, the, the visual, uh. Issues from where that big box is and so forth. We're gonna go with that request as well?
I had a seven foot, yeah, a seven foot fence along the rail trail. Along the, the perimeter.
Oh, of the entire property or up to the building?
I think just from the.
The container.
Just from the building over to the property line, won't that touch the fence? The white fence, I mean, that touches one seventy-one, doesn't that go all the way there, so wouldn't?
It does run back behind you.
Yep.
Yeah, so just, I think just a fence from the building over to. As far as you can go, reasonably go towards seventy-one Acton. So that all of the container and any storage, all that'll be blocked, and then that'll, no one will see it from the rail trail. I think that fixes that problem.
Okay, so from the building, from the building to the seventy-one A.
I think that's fair, yeah.
You see any issues with that, Brad? Is that okay with, with?
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm cool with it. It's, uh, the. Container itself where it does have some rust on it, um, I think that me painting it, and I was gonna enlist, uh. Some kids from the town if they want to do some artwork on it, to whatever, if they want to paint, paint something nice on there, because the rail trail's there, they could have some. They want to express their art on there, that's fine by me. I was gonna ask them if they want to do that, but I've kind of was waiting to see what happened with this meeting. However, if you want to screen the whole thing, that's fine. Um, the container itself, if it was painted, I think it would be a lot prettier. Uh, I, or I could just screen the whole thing. It's, it's, it's up to you guys. I'm fine with whatever.
So if you're gonna have the kids paint the trailer or the, or the container, about the building?
Well, uh, the building's not in bad shape, it does, it could use some touch up on the red.
Well, I meant to put artwork on it.
They don't paint the building, how about that?
All right. So do we?
Oh, you mean artwork on the back of the building was the, the rail trail? Yeah, that'd be nice.
But. Don't want to speak out of turn here, but I, I'd like to get this wrapped up. We've been at this a reasonable length of time. I think we've got. The answers that we need. And I think we got Brad in agreement, so there's no surprises how we phrase our. Special permit with. Conditions. So, Leslie, you had made a start. You want to continue?
No, I didn't make a start. I was.
Sorry, that was the other meeting, the other, uh.
Yeah, no.
I can, um.
Go ahead, Peter, then.
I can make the motion. Um, so I, I make a motion to grant. Uh, special permit for three over twenty-five thousand pound vehicles. And two under twenty-five thousand pound vehicles.
In addition to the one. Two additional twenty-five, under twenty-five.
The two additional, well, one's by right, so I didn't. Um, and then also, uh, that seven foot fence screening. Or fencing be added, uh, where do we say it was gonna start? From where the seventy-one Acton Street fence, privacy fence ends?
Yeah, it would start, right, on the applicant's side, uh, it would go to within fifteen feet of, um, Acton Street.
Yep, and then it will extend along Acton Street until the telephone pole, roughly.
Right, but it'll maintain a ten-foot setback from Acton Street.
Ten or fifteen?
We're gonna do a ten or fifteen? I think it's.
I thought it was ten.
Rick was saying ten is reasonable.
At least ten.
At least ten. If you make it thirteen and a half, you split the difference, right? Just at least ten feet off the street edge.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll do. We can do a ten-foot setback, and then the fence leads toward, uh, to the length of ending at the telephone pole. Um, and then also screening in the back, uh, abutting the rail trail from the building. All the way to, um. Uh, the fence at seventy-one Acton Street. I believe that, that ends right at the end there.
So you said that from the building, you're, you're gonna be hiding the container, so he doesn't have to worry about painting it?
Correct.
And I think the, the other conditions that we had, shall I go through?
Yes, I, I can do that, yes. And, um, also, uh, uh, the condition is that. Um, all of the commercial vehicles that are, um. Uh, a part of the geological, uh, the, um, what's the name?
Geological excavation?
Uh, geological excavation business are all registered as being garaged and manared. And that the business is, uh, transferred from being. Um, a sew business basically to now being a mainer business. I think those are the two conditions we have for that.
I don't know if we can make those a condition. We can acknowledge that. He, that he agreed to them, but I don't believe we can require it as a condition.
I, I will say, um, I do want to step in on this because I'm thinking about that, and, um, it. For instance, just one truck is, is almost fourteen hundred dollars in a registration fee. And that's for twelve months, and they renew in December because I just renewed them. And if I go and I change that right now, I'm gonna have to pay the thirteen eighty. For that truck plus all of them, uh, they're all around, uh, so I mean, I'd, I'm, I'd be. It would cost me, I guess, I mean, if it's a stipulation, I have to do it to stay, but it would cost me an almost excess of six thousand dollars to change them. I could. When they renew, I don't have a problem to renew them.
They all, do they all renew within one year? Is that how long?
Uh, yeah, they renew in December.
All of them?
Uh, ex- yeah, except for, um, one, one is June.
So why don't, why don't you put an amendment to that motion?
I'll change that. Uh, so the amendment is going to be, not that you have to immediately transfer. The, uh, commercial vehicles to being garage and manor, but. Once the registrations are up for renewal, you will renew them, but in. In the, uh, documentation, they'll be garage and manors instead of, uh, style. And that way, it, it doesn't affect you. Financially, because you'd be renewing them anyway.
Yeah, so we could condition that, Peter, if you like, we could condition that, say, all, everything shall be transferred by, uh, January one. Twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, because.
There's the June one rolling.
Right.
Okay. So, yeah, so I'll make that amendment that, um. Uh, by January twenty twenty-three. I guess January first, twenty twenty-three, um, all commercial vehicles that you currently have will be. Registered in Maynard, as garage and manors that day. Okay. And you said you were going to transfer the business.
Oh, yeah.
As being stowed to Maynard, and that, that you can do right away?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Uh, tomorrow.
So why don't I do, uh, you have a, a condition that within sixty days, you transfer the business. As being registered, from being registered and stowed to being registered and named it. Within sixty days, I think that's a fair amount of time.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I think that's, that's it for the motion.
Good, I need a second.
Second.
All right, Jerry seconds. Any further comments? No, I think we're good.
And, and to be clear, we have, we, we have wound, uh, or we've wrapped the finding in this motion as well.
Yes.
Is it, right?
Yes.
I think it went well for all the different directions that it appeared to be going in tonight. Uh, I know personally, I'm very satisfied with what we've just agreed upon, and, and hopefully Brad is too.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, good.
Thank you.
Well, thank, thank you for choosing to have your business here, Brad. I, I think, uh, it's important that we grow our business community, and.
I'm excited. Thank you.
Thank, thank you for your patience as we go through our roundabout deliberations. So we need to have a vote on this motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. All abstained. Mr. Schultz is not voting.
Oh, he's extra to, he's, uh, he's our, our.
I'm an alternate today.
Okay. All right, so. The way I like to end these discussions is to have Bill give you the timeline of when what happens.
Uh, we will, uh, draft a decision for you. Uh, and it probably will take a week or so. I, the, the, um, it'll be, uh, signed by the chair. Uh, it's filed with the clerk and there's a twenty-day appeal period. Uh, we notify the butters again, and there's an opportunity to appeal. At the, uh, conclusion of the, the, uh, appeal period. On, you, you are good to go. From, I, um, from the zoning board's permits. So, um, what we typically do, like any of the deadlines, like the sixty days. Um, the, this, this is all from the effective date of the permit, meaning. Because we don't know if there should be an appeal, but from the effective date of the permit typically. So you, you should have, uh. You, you, I mean, we'll, we'll, we'll have a draft within the week, I'm sure, and we'll be notified when we, when we file it.
Brad, Brad, this is Rick Asman. I just wanted to remind you that you do need to get a building permit for the storage trailer.
Oh, yeah, right, we talked about that, yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Right. So that concludes our public hearing on the sixty-five Acton Street issue. We have a couple other items on the agenda. Uh, discussion regarding ZBA educational opportunities. In other words, continuing education to deal with our, uh. Membership here in the ZBA.
Uh, most of that, um, you know, Paul, you and I had discussed some options. Um, and given the late hour, if, if, um, the board would like, um. I can distribute again what courses will be available by the, uh, the, um, CPTCs, um. Which is a very good course, but I would encourage everybody to take the, um. It, they have basically, it's a rolls of, uh, planning boards and zoning boards, so very good. Uh, of course, it gives a refresher on, on everything, all the special permits, what, uh, the, uh, variants. Um, and, um, and if there's anything else that Paul has in mind, I mean, I can, um, forward it as well.
No, I, I just wanted to get it on the radar screen that it would be healthy for us. To occasionally hear other people debate zoning stuff. And, you know, we, we get in the middle of the weeds here with our cases. Which is good, but sometimes getting a refresher from the outside world might be useful. And so Bill and I have been talking about this, and if he has some suggestions for us. That would be really good, and we don't have to continue any longer tonight to discuss it, just to get you guys thinking about it. And, and, uh. Uh, make it so we can have some really healthy discussions in the future.
Yeah. Next month, uh, we do have, we have, I think we have, we have three. Um, applications already for next month. Couple are easy, uh, but, um, we have, we have, you know what we have next month? Our first. Renewal from. First five-year renewal we've done. And I, I remember when we did it and we said five years, and it's coming up, so we'll have to have a celebration. Big deal, huh?
I'll get a candle.
All right, so I'm looking, I'm looking for one more motion tonight. You got a second on that? Yeah, John seconds, Jerry made the motion, and I think we're all in favor.
Yep.
Yeah.
So good enough. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, good meeting.
Good meeting, thank you.
Thank you, have a good night, everyone.
Hey, Julia, are you on still?
I'm still here.
Oh, um, are we recording to the cloud or do we record to the server, you know?
I recorded to the cloud.
Okay, I'll get it tomorrow. Thanks. Thanks, everybody.